Sa mga SP staff, friends from the media, of course, our city administrator, Mr. Alan Andrade. Sir, may hapon kaninyo. The third regular session of the eighth City Council for the year 2025 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Sena Campos, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Hymn, and City Hymn.
Let us put ourselves in a holy presence of God. Lord, as we gather karong hapon para sa among session, Lord, naghangyo kami na i-guide nimo ang among mga panghunahuna o gamo ang kasing-kasing. Tabangi kami to make decisions na makapagpalipay sa imo in accordance to your will. Tabangimi to discuss matters at hand in a reasonable way. Tabangimi to give up our own personal interest para matagan ng lugar kung unsang ikama ayaw para sa kadaghanan. Matuman dili ang amo ang pagbuot kung dili ang imo ha, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
Bayang magiliw, pelas na silangan. Alab ng puso sa tipimoy buhay. Lupang hinirang, dulan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupig, di ka pasisiil. Sa dagat at bundok, sa simway at sa langit mong bogao. May dilagang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kisslap ng watawat mo'y tagumpay na nagrihingning. Ang bituwing at araw niya, kailan pa may dimang didilim. Lupa ng araw ng walhati pagsinta, buhay ay langit sa feeling mo. Aming ligaya na pag may mga api ang mamatay ng dahil sayo. Ho, ho, gubinsya na minamahal, sangsuba nga ng Davao. Badwa ka na madayaw, ya na kuyun niyang utaw. Malipayon kay palangga ka ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupahan mo, yang tanuma bunga-hol. Dagat mo mga suba, madali kayang hisga, kabuhian kawiliha ng kanan. Umahan na Davao Oriental, langit mo mapawaay. Yang kabuta yan, yang kapatagan, maya manay magandahay. Masbiha impa kamiko matu, kami mo uli anikan mo. Garbuna me na Davao enyo, yang akserbis ang kadyawan mo. Palangga siyang manmaki, ng yaman mo di makati. Sangkat kayan, sangkat patatan, sangkat kadaghanan ka mayayuan. Magkada niyang umatjeritay, kayang palipot na gandahan. Sangkadyawan yang sangukat, niya iyan niya riwaan. Tagamat i ma pinakaroon, tagamat i ma pinakdadoon. Tagamat i ma pinakuroon, yang tagamat i ma pinag. Tagamat i ma pinakaroon, tagamat i ma pinakaroon. Tagamat i ma pinakuroon, sa Diyos na bang makagagahu. Tagamat i madayaw, tagamat i kami.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Edmond Dupang Jr., Honorable Rojelio Pabio, Honorable Sida Princess Campos, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaita, Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat, Honorable Raoul Antupuesto, Honorable Jerome Deeng Hirang, Honorable Francisco Bardón Jr., Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara. Absent only Mr. Chair. Honorable Edgar Valera, Honorable Daniel Makaubos, Honorable Tumaz Emiliano, Honorable Lorenzo Leo Girabat.
Present. Call on Mr. Chair. Thank you. Proceed to the next item, please.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated July 15, 2025, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with their previous minutes? If they're non-Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I have here the copy of our minutes for the last regular session. There are total of 34 pages and the last page being line two. If there are no objections or corrections, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the minutes of the eighth City Council, the second regular session, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of our previous minutes dated July 15, 2025. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Bardón. Hearing no objections, the previous minutes are hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
For question, our Mr. Chair. No guests invited. Privilege or other reports of observation?
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Are there any reports, observations by the members? Honorable Antupuesto, followed by the Honorable Rabat.
Mr. Chair, distinguished colleague in this August body, good afternoon. I use my time for my privileged speech. I rise today on a matter of a public concern that has long affected our constituent daily lives, economic well-being, and the public safety in the city of Mati and the province of Davao Oriental. I speak no less than the very unsatisfactory performance of the Davao Oriental Electric Cooperative, or DORICO. Mr. Chair, immediately after our regular session last July 8, 2025, and even yesterday, I received numerous phone calls and messages from our constituent urging me to bring their complaints before the legislative body. Their frustration are reached echo loudly in social media, particularly on Facebook, where concerned citizens have gone as far as appealing to the Supreme Court. Yes, Mr. Chair, the Supreme Court to act on their grievances due to the uttered inefficiency of DORICO. Allow me to quote one of the posts that caught my attention. Experiencing the inferior service of DORICO as concerned citizen and consumer, I respectfully submit this informal complaint for the egregious failure to provide reliable and efficient electric service. The people of Mati, the people of Davao Oriental, especially in Carraga and other municipalities, suffer the frequent power outage, voltage fluctuation, and this inadequate supply. This caused economic loss, compromised public safety, and degraded the quality of life. The citizen further prayed that, number one, DORICO is to be ordered to implement immediate corrective measure, including infrastructural upgrades and better maintenance. Number two, the Energy Regulatory Commission, or ERC, conduct a full-blown investigation into DORICO's operation and penalizes any non-compliance with the regulatory standard. Number three, the revocation or the revocation of DORICO's franchise should be considered while ensuring the ordinary employees are protected and accountable officers are sanctioned appropriately. Mr. Chair, my fellow colleagues, let us not downplay this more or this mere online ranting. These are the authentic voices of our constituent, residents, business owner, professional, and even the student who suffered because of the DORICO's failure. As consumer, we pay. As citizens, we demand service. However, we receive burnouts after burnouts, poor voltage, and erratic supply that endanger livelihood, healthcare, healthcare services, and public order. Let us also remember, Mr. Chair, that even Senator Christopher Lawrence Bongo recently called out DORICO during the Facebook Live session on March 30, 2024. The senator emphasized, and I quote, Ayusinin yo po ang inyong serbisyo, binigay po sa inyo ang pagkakataon willing naman pung magbayad ang ating kababayan. Suklianin yo naman ng maayos na serbisyo. The senator also warned that the hearing may be conducted to assess the capability of electric cooperative like DORICO to fulfill their franchise obligation. This is not isolated complaint. Even former congressman and now our city mayor, Mayor Mayo Almario, has reached out to the national official for help. But however, we're still live in the dark, in a melted ice in the refrigerator, literally and figuratively. Mr. Chair, allow me to emphasize. Public utility franchise are the right. They are not privileged. They are privileged granted by the government to serve the public good. If that privilege is abused and neglected, the people through this legislative body have very rights or every right to demand accountability. Mr. Chair, while this council has already taken the initial action through a resolution sponsored by our honorable Sandra Alcantara, requesting DORICO to benchmark with the San Buanga City Electric Cooperative, the complaint have persisted and have grown louder. That is why I rise today not to repeat what has been said, but to make or to take the next step to summon DORICO before this council. And now respectfully move and pray that the City Council formally summon the management of DORICO to appear before this chamber and answer under oath the complaint raised by the people of Mati. Let them explain, number one, why we are experiencing continued power instability? What measure have dictated in the past years to improve service? What are the investment and maintain plans? Most importantly, are they still fit and capable of carrying the burden of electrifying the city as well to the whole province of Davao Oriental? Let us not wait until our economy suffer irreparable damage. Let us not remain silenced with our people are plugged in the darkness and desperation. Mr. Chair, let this be the day that we, as a public servant, draw the line and stand up to the right for our constituent to accessible, reliable, and efficient electricity. Let there be light because the people deserve no less. We need a good power company so that our dream, our time, will be continued to shine. That's all and good afternoon.
Thank you, Honorable Antupuesto. Honorable Antupuesto is requesting that we invite DORICO when?
As soon as possible, your honor.
Next regular session. If there are no objections, please put it in writing and please send a letter to my office.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to manifest, Mr. Presiding Officer, my colleagues, and to our secretary, the representation would be appealed to this August body for the consideration regarding the communication number 08-2025 from the local chief executive requesting for the passage of a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Alan E. Andrade as a city administrator of the city government of Mati to be included in the order of business. If the body agrees to my request to be include this matter into order business and be discussed under the unassigned business rules, suspended house rules, may I invite Mr. Alan Andrade, city administrator Mr. Alan Andrade, to be present today for session before the confirmation to present his plan and programs in line with the people administration concept of the city mayor, Mr. Joel Mayo Almario.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Antupuesto that communication 08 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, can he take note, Mr. Secretary?
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Rabat is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madayon na hapon kaninyo tanan. So based on my observation with our mayor, he is very kid-oriented, meaning the welfare of our kids means a lot to him. So I created or proposed an ordinance, a resolution. So I have submitted a resolution, a proposed resolution A, and I would respectfully request that it be taken up under unassigned business through suspension of house rules for discussion and possible approval.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Rabat that proposed resolution A under order of business be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, can he take note, Mr. Secretary?
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Are there any requests from the members? Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, there is a communication, communication number six, series of 2025, from the Punong Barangay of Dwan for their ordinance providing for the welfare and rights, rules, and policies of senior citizens, Mr. Chair. If my colleagues in this August body may allow that we will tackle this under unassigned business suspended house rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Campos that communication six be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, can he take note, Mr. Secretary?
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Are there any requests by the members? If they're none, please proceed. Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to my colleague and the visitors on SP staff, also the secretary of Sangunyang Pangungson to give the explanation before the confirmation of the administrator of City of Mati. Mr. Chair, I ask permission to the rules to suspend our house rule to give time to our visitors.
Thank you, Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, to give way for our resource speaker who wants to speak for today, I move for the suspension of house rules, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the suspension of house rules. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio. Hearing no objections, the house rules are now suspended. To our city administrator, Sir Alan Andrade, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Before I proceed, I would like to pay my respects to the honorable members of the eighth City Council headed by our honorable Vice Mayor Lorenzo Enzo Rabat, and to all the councillors, the returning and the new fight councillors, congratulations to all, and to our SP staff headed by our SP secretary, my former colleague, Honorable Jovi Mabini, to all friends in media, guests, and to everyone, to the city of Mati. I am very privileged and thankful for this occasion, Honorable Vice Mayor, and to all the members of the City Council to be invited and to be given the chance to serve again the city of Mati. My road to this position has been, how would you say, has been exciting. I've been your city administrator from the previous administration of the former mayor, Michelle Rabat, for two years, starting July 2023 to June 2025. And now I have transitioned from the former administration to the people's administration headed by our honorable city mayor, Joel Mayo Almario. So for one, this opportunity is very rare and as my friends I consulted said, this is a one in a million opportunity. So before I accepted the offer then of our honorable mayor, Joel Mayo Almario, kinangan patamaan na dani ba? So the honorable Joel Mayo Almario, I have asked the honorable mayor then to, that I will consult first my family, my family, and of course, the former mayor, Michelle Rabat, and other friends to whether to accept. But since this offer and has been accepted by most of I consulted, so not really 100%, but since most of them have said that this is a chance of a lifetime, so I accepted the invitation and the generous offer of then and our new mayor, Joel Mayo Almario. So ano ang usakong himoon as your city administrator? So in my stint for two years, I have been, the office has been open to everyone, regardless of political color, regardless of class, regardless of also of any affiliation. So my office has been a facilitator of both internal and external concerns. So when I say internal, we have a very big organization. We have a, this is a big corporation with 49 to 50 offices and departments and divisions, including the Sangunyang Pangungson. So it was an eye-opener for me to be the city admin. It took a while also to transition from being a legislator to the functions of the chief executive. So for that, I would like to thank then for the opportunity. First, syempre ang atong ginoo for this opportunity for me to serve and to be given the chance to accomplish what the city needs and how I can help the new administration and the Sangunyang Pangungson and for all the city of Mati. I would be glad to be of service. Labina sa atong priority program sa atong halandong mayor, which is Mati for All. M, modernize local governance. A, advance inclusive education and lifelong learning. T, transform tourism and culture. I, invest in inclusive infrastructure. F, fuel the economy. O, optimize health, emergency, and social services. R, reinforce peace, justice, and resilience. A, advance environmental sustainability. L, lift all sectors. And L, lead with unity. So for this gesture and for this vision and mission of our honorable mayor, I will strive and do my best to fulfill his policies and his vision and mission, which is all we can see will benefit for the greater good, for the good of the city of Mati. So ang ako lang hangyo sa tanan, kunama ko'y pakukulang last two years, and I think, and I can assure everyone here that I will not waste the confidence, the trust and confidence of the mayor and to all the members here of the Sangunyang Pangungson. Kunakoy pakukulang, I will rectify it and make sure I will do better. If tanan tong nahimo nakaw 100%, I will strive double, 200% for all. So for that, I would like to thank first, for the thanking God, my family, and my friends from all sectors who agreed majority to, for me to pursue this job, and this is work. And since this is work, human naman ang eleksyon, so dinata kayang lang magis dun o politika. And besides, the message of our mayor is very sound and very ideal for a striving city like ours. So let us be one, let magsambuk. And I think my presence here would cement the mission and vision of the honorable mayor. So kunakoy pakukulang, call my attention, and my office is always open, just like before, Honorable Vice Mayor, and to all the members here, we had fruitful and very productive engagement in some of your sessions. I will be also open, just just the same. And I'd like also to thank my God, family, and Mayor Michelle Rabat for transitioning me also, for giving me the chance to work under the chief executive. I've been trained there and most probably I received the same confidence from the new mayor, Joel Mayo Almario, for the job that I had did before. And of course, I would like to thank also, most of all, the chance, the opportunity to work under his administration despite our different political affiliations. I am humbled by this gesture, Honorable Presiding Officer, and to all the members. And I thank the honorable mayor, Joel Mayo Almario, for this opportunity to continue to serve the city of Mati. Thank you. May hapon sa tanan.
Thank you, our city administrator, still, Mr. Alan Andrade. Do you have any questions for our city administrator? If none, Tito, we'd like to thank you for your time here today, and we look forward to working with you once again from the seven to the eighth City Council. A few minutes recess is declared. May we invite you sa tunga, Tito, for a quick photo opportunity.
Thank you.
It's resumed. We are still under suspended house rules. Honorable Campos is recognized. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move for this August body to be back into plenary, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos to convert this August body.
I move for the lifting of the suspended house rules, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the lifting of suspended house rules. Do any members second her motion? Does any member second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat Gaita. Hearing no objections. Suspended house rules are now lifted. Please proceed to the next item, Mister Secretary.
Reading and referral of proposed measures, communications. No proposed ordinance for first reading. For proposed resolution, letter A, authored by Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat, a resolution urging the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office, PCSO, STL Authorized Agent Corporations, and law enforcement agencies in the city of Mati to strictly implement and monitor the ban on minors' participation in entry to or loitering around small-town lottery STL outlets and activities in accordance with Republic Act Number 7160, the PCSO STL Implementing Rules and Regulations, Presidential Degree Number 1602, and Section 16 of Republic Act Number 7160, the Local Government Code of 1991. Referred to the proponent as manifested by the honorable Rabat. This will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Proposed Resolution B, authored by Honorable Edgar T. Valera, a resolution requesting all beach resort owners within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Mati, regardless of location, to provide a road right-of-way for our fisherfolks and shell collectors to pass through their titled property for economic activity. As instructed by our good vice mayor, referred to the proponent, and to conduct committee meeting for decide measure. For communication messages, Communication Number 06, Series 2025.
Excuse me, a few minutes recess is declared. What? Any member, man? Any member? Ako magpili. Nasa ano, letter K, section 1? Report to the Chair to any member of the Sanggunian who shall act as the temporary presiding officer, only if he is going out of the session hall.
Proceed, word?
Yes, proceed. Please proceed. Communication? Okay. Session resumed.
Communication Number 06, Series 2025, from Punong barangay Ivan L. Gias of Dawan, addressed to the honorable members of the Pangungso through Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, city vice mayor, regarding barangay ordinance number 2025-001, an ordinance providing for the welfare, rights, rules, and policies of senior citizens in barangay Dawan, city of Mati, double Oriental, referred to Chairman Committee on Oversight, Ordinance, and Legal Matters, the honorable Sina Princess Di Campos. As manifested by the honorable Campos, this will discuss under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number 01, Series 2023, letter from our mayor, Honorable Joel Mayo Almario, dated July 15, 2025, addressed to the honorable members of the Pangungso through Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, city vice mayor, requesting to enact an appropriate legislative measure authorizing the formal adoption of the proposed corporate seal of the city of Mati. Refer to Chairman Committee on Tourism, the honorable Edmondup Zipang Jr. Communication Number 08, Series 2025, an additional communication in this session as manifested by the honorable Anto Pesto, approved by the all members present, a letter from Honorable Joel Z. Mayo Almario, our city mayor, addressed to the honorable members of the Pangungso through Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, city vice mayor, requesting for passage of a resolution confirming the appointment of Mister Alan E. Andrade, a city government department head, one city administrator of the city of Mati. Refer to Chairman Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountability, the honorable Raoul M. Anto Pesto. As manifested by the honorable Anto Pesto, appropriate resolution be passed under unassigned business suspended house rules. That's all for communications, Mister Chair. For committee report, we have two committee reports. Committee Report Number 01, Series 2025, by the honorable Campos, committee chair on rules and privileges.
The honorable Princess Sina Campos is recognized.
Mister Chair, I move that this august body be convened into a committee of the whole, Mister Chair. I do so move.
Committee report.
Mister Chair, can I adopt the two committee reports?
Yes.
Okay. I have here two committee reports, Mister Chair. First, committee report is from the Committee on Rules on Privilege, Mister Chair. I now move for the adoption of the Committee Report Number 1, Series of 2025, Mister Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion presented by the honorable Sina Campos for the adoption of Committee Report Number 1. Any second? Seconded by all members present, Committee Report Number 1 is hereby adopted. The proposed amendments on internal rules of procedures.
Mister Chair, I have here Committee Report Number 2. This is a committee report from the Committee on Cultural Communities. Since the proponent or the chairman is not present today, I, as the vice chairman, would like to render Committee Report Number 02. If there are no objections, Mister Chair, I move for its adoption. I do so move.
Thank you, honorable Sina Campos. There's a motion presented for the adoption of Committee Report Number 2 regarding the certificate of endorsement of Matikado ng Felicito Masagnay. Is there any second to the motion? Seconded by all members present, the Committee Report Number 2 is hereby adopted.
For calendar business, we have one unfinished business. Communication Number 95, Series 2025, from the previous city council, VII city council. Administrative case Number 01, Series 2025, filed by Mister Virgil T. Valentin, dated March 12, 2025, against barangay Kagawad, Errol R. Aquino of barangay Macambol, for abuse of authority and grave misconduct. Referred to the Chairman Committee on Good Government and Public Ethics Accountability, the honorable Raoul M. Anto Pesto. For business for the day, for second reading, proposed resolution by the honorable Campos.
The honorable Sina Campos is recognized.
Mister Chair, can I ask what specific resolution amongst the three?
The resolution adopting the amendments to the internal rules of procedure of the Sanggunian Pangungso, Honorable Sina Campos.
Mister Chair, I now move for the adoption of the amendments to the internal rules of procedures of the Sanggunian Pangungso of the city of Mati, as discussed and deliberated during our N-Bank meeting on Committee on Rules and Privileges held on July 14, Mister Chair. If there are no objections, I move for the adoption of this resolution, Mister Chair. I do so move.
Thank you, honorable Campos. There's a motion presented by the honorable Sina Campos for the adoption, for the resolution adopting the amendments to the internal rules of procedure. Any second to the motion? Seconded by all members present, the resolution adopting the amendments to the internal rules of procedure of the Sanggunian Pangungso, city of Mati, is now adapted and approved.
Proposed Resolution Number 2, Mister Chair.
Yes, honorable Sina Campos is recognized.
Mister Chair, I have here a resolution, a resolution accepting the Matikado ng Felicito El Masagnay as the indigenous people mandatory representative or IPMR to the city council of the city of Mati representing the mandaya or I.P., Mister Chair. If there are no objects, objection, Mister Chair, I move for the passage of this resolution accepting Matikado ng Felicito Masagnay, Mister Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion presented by the honorable Sina Campos for the resolution accepting Matikado ng Felicito Masagnay as the IPMR representative to the city council of the city of Mati. Any second to the motion presented? All members present, seconded the motion. The resolution is hereby approved. Next, Mister Secretary.
No proposed ordinance for second reading for an unassigned business subject for suspension of house rules.
The honorable Sina Campos is recognized for the suspension of house rules.
Mister Chair, to give way to other measures to be discussed, I move for the suspension of house rules, Mister Chair. I do so move.
There's a motion presented for the suspension of house rules. Any second to the motion? Seconded by all members present, the house rules is hereby suspended. The honorable Raoul Anto Pesto is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. For the floor, the floor now is open for any question regarding the Communication 08-2025, in a confirmation of the appointment of Mister Alan Andrade as a city administrator of the city government of Mati.
Yes, any questions regarding the appointment of our city administrator, Alan E. Andrade? Now, please proceed, honorable Raoul Anto Pesto.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Now I move for the adoption of the committee as a whole, recommendation regarding the Communication Number 08-2025. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion presented by honorable Raoul Anto Pesto. Any second to the motion? Seconded by all members present, the resolution for the appointment of, confirming the appointment of Mister Alan E. Andrade, a city government department head, city administrator of the city of Mati, is now approved.
The proposed Resolution A by the honorable Paulo Rabat.
The honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat is now recognized. The Chair would like to request one minute recess.
Sige, session is resumed. Honorable Rabat. Honorable Campos.
Mister Chair, to give way to the request of the honorable Paulo Rabat, I now move that this august body convene into the committee of the whole, Mister Chair.
There's a motion by the honorable Campos that this body be converted into committee as a whole. Do any member second her motion? Seconded by honorable Rabat, hearing no objections, we are now converted into committee as a whole. Honorable Rabat is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The floor is now open for any discussions and questions pertaining to said resolution, a resolution urging the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office, PCSO, STL Authorized Agent Corporations and Law Enforcement Agencies in the city of Mati to strictly implement and monitor the ban on minors' participation in entry to or loitering around small-town lotteries, STL outlets, and activities in accordance with Republic Act Number 7610, the PCSO STL Implementing Rules and Regulations Presidential Degree Number 1602, and Section 16 of Republic Act Number 716, the Local Government Code of 1991.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions. Are there any honorable Sebelino followed by the honorable Campos?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Once again, mahingapun sa tanan. Just would like to commend our city councillor Paulo Rabat, our committee chair on games and amusement, for having this legislative action, especially as the youth representative. I'm always grateful and pleasure to have any legislative actions that could benefit the youth. And I guess that the PCSO should strengthen their implementation and banning on the minors sa mga STL or any loitering areas kay, as I also witnessed in the community level sa mga bata pa, nung ginasugo silang mga ginikanan sa pagtaya in our STL. So, I commend Gonz Paulo for that. And a suggestion ang pod siguro that they should also strengthen their publication or information to the community level sa kaning our Republic Act. So, kanadang, Mister Chair.
Thank you, honorable Sebelino. Kabalupod ko ng STL na certain radius from a school na na dili siya pwede ibutang, na dali closely monitor pod nila na. Honorable Campos.
Mister Chair, not an objection, but I would like to congratulate the honorable Paulo Rabat because it is actually in line with the mga 10-point agenda sa ato ang mayor, Mister Chair, and also guapo ang dagan sa ato ang sessions the past two weeks. Si honorable Sebelino R.S.K. nagpasao support in the ban of online gambling, and then now kaning ban sa mga minors na magpatad sa mga STL, Mister Chair. Now, Mister Chair, actually naaman diri sa atong resolutions, but for the pleasure of everyone listening, especially our watchers online na nagre-review kay guapo kaayo ang ato ang proposed resolution from the honorable Paulo Rabat. Now, naaman nung asalikod, pero gusto lang ako ipa-reiterate para madungog sa kadaghanan kung unsa ang mahitabo sa mga STL or mga negosyante na nagapataya o niya nagdawat gihapon ug bata, karama gaig ulo. Unsa ang sanctions nila and unsa ang mabuhat sa pulis sa ila. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to respond to the query of honorable Campos? Honorable Rabat.
So, we will be in a few weeks, or hopefully by this week, we'll be calling you mga law enforcement agencies so we can have a committee hearing about that. But under here, under resolve further to request the PCSO and the STL Authorized Agent Corporation operating in the city to highly visible signage that clearly state strictly no minors and all STL booths and kiosk. And number two, to conduct regular orientation with the STL booths, operators, and agents regarding the compliance with the national laws prohibiting minors. With this as well, we can coordinate with the law enforcement as well so they can really enforce this resolution to the STLs.
Thank you, honorable Rabat. Are there any follow-up questions? Honorable Anto Pesto.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair. Regarding this resolution passed by our honorable Paulo, you are concerned about the STL only. How about you mga walk-in ushers? Did you find that, did you, did you observe that sa also i-gambling? Can you include? Not the last two. Then, wala silang, wala silang outlet, but they are roaming around even in a small community to beat, ano, to collecting, beating, diba? So, about that, can you observe that, to include that resolution? And I think also, about you mga dool sa eskwelahan and dool sa mga public market? Thank you.
Thank you, honorable Raoul Anto Pesto. Honorable Rabat.
Thank you for that inquiry, honorable Anto Pesto. It would be very good to be adding that in the resolution. So, thank you for that inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to take note, ang usher sa last two, illegal na na daan. So, without the resolution, dapat yun na sila tilitugtan, but it can be considered in the resolution. I think walay specific prescribed fees per I think walay specific prescribed fees per violation sa LGU. If I'm correct, tal walay specific, no? But if you want further, na na fees, di dapat ordinance na na. But this resolution will just act as a request so Honorable Rabat can call all the STL operators and persons involved. Thank you. Are there any further questions? If none, please proceed.
I now move for the adoption of this committee as a whole recommendation for this said resolution.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for proposed resolution A. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Makoobos, hearing no objections nor further discussions, this motion is carried. Who's next? Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, this is regarding the communication from Barangay Dawan regarding an ordinance providing for the welfare rights, rules, and policies of senior citizens in Barangay Dawan. Mr. Chair, the floor is now open for any discussions regarding this ordinance from the Barangay, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the barangay ordinance from Barangay Dawan presented by Honorable Campos. Are there any? If there are none, are there none? Please proceed.
If there are no objections, Mr. Chair, or further questions, I move for the adoption of the Committee of the Whole recommendation. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for this said communication. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pang, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. A few minutes recess is declared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And the floor now is open for the question and, uh, question regarding the communication zero-eight dash twenty-twenty-five in confirmation of the appointment of Mr. Alan Andrade as a city administrator for the City Government of Mathi.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions. I believe there are none. Please proceed.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding the communication number zero-eight dash twenty-twenty-five. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Antupuesto for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Seconded by all the members, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. We are done with all requested communications under committee as a whole. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, since we are done with the committee as a whole, I move that this August body be back into plenary, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the conversion of this body back into plenary. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Sebelino and Honorable Igah, hearing no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Antupuesto is recognized.
Mr. Chair, now I move for the resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Alan Andrade as a city administrator, Department Head One, a city administrator for the City of Mathi. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Antupuesto for a passage of resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable, who's, say, Honorable Rabat is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the passage of the said resolution.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Rabat for the passage of the said resolution. Can you read the resolution, please?
A resolution urging the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office, PCSO, STL Authorized Agent Corporations and Law Enforcement Agencies in the City of Mathi to strictly implement and monitor the ban on minors' participation in entry-to or loitering around small-town lottery, STL outlets, and activities in accordance with the Republic Act Number seven-six-one-zero, the PCSO STL Implementing Rules and Regulations Presidential Decree Number one-six-zero-two, the Section sixteen of Republic Act Number seven-one-six, the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Rabat for a passage of resolution as he just read. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of a resolution confirming barangay ordinance number twenty-twenty-five zero-zero-one of Barangay Dawan, City of Mathi, entitled an ordinance providing for the welfare, rights, rules, and policies of senior citizens in Barangay Dawan. Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of this resolution.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. We are done with all requested communications. I'm right. We are done with all requested communications, but we are still under suspended house rules. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the lifting of the suspended house rules, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the lifting of suspended house rules, seconded by all the members. Suspended house rules are now lifted. What's the next item, Mr. Secretary? Announcement, other matters? Thank you. Are there any announcements, other matters? Before we, uh, proceed, I'd like to thank the CSU and Mathi PNP for their presence here today. Salamat kayo, ma'am, sir, no? Kung di mahurut ang mga burger, hatang na. Thank you. Anyway, Honorable Antupuesto, followed by the Honorable Pabio. Uh, Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to our Presiding Officer. Co-members of the Eighth City Council, Espi Support Staff headed by our honorable Espi Secretary, our friends from Broadcast Media, visitors, Mayong Hapon.
Mayong Hapon.
With the kind indulgence of the members of the Eighth City Council, present on this afternoon session, this manifestation would like to manifest to an early, earnestly invite the support and cooperation of all barangay officials and staff, functionaries, and residents of twenty-six barangays of our city to participate on the conduct of Operation Linus this coming Friday, July twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, at four PM within the barangays only. Let us clean our barangay hall, health centers, and other government offices, and infrastructure within our barangays to make it conducive and a welcoming atmosphere for our clients. Let us clean the canals, drainage, and the other waterways to prevent flooding. Let us clean the creeks and rivers free from garbage. Let us clean our houses and the surroundings so that the dinghy and other disease can be prevented. Report and other narrative is requested through pictures and videos of the Operation Linus and can be submitted to my office for the purposes. To conduct Operation Linus is voluntarily. However, I being the chairman of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, enjoy the support of our barangay officials and staff, functionaries, and residents of the twenty-six barangays to maintain the cleanliness practice, proper waste disposal, foster the spirit of bayanihan through collective effort of keeping the neighborhood clean and free from trash and actively respond to the call of the office of the city mayor to make the clean through the flagship of the people's administration. Mayayok tagtabang sa ato ang buotan, Liga President Honorable Y. Makoobos and Esqui Chairman, Federated President Honorable, uh, Tomas Sebelino to disseminate the information. Thank you, and once again, mayong hapon.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio. Honorable Dayang Hirang. Makadawat ba mig sulatana, cons?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mayong hapon sa tanan. I would like to inform the honorable members of this August body that the Philippine Counselors League Provincial Federation election is on August for two thousand twenty-five at Hanis Hotel, uh, Restaurant, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer. Ten thousand pesos for newly elected counselors and eight thousand eight hundred sa mga karaan.
Thank you. Kung pwede, kumuboto kapulo, cons Jimboi. Kumboto ko kapulo para sa Ima.
Off the record, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Dayang Hirang. Honorable Makoobos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of query, Mr. Chairman. Naabasa ato ang roles nga whatever case filed, uh, on the other council, ma carryover ba sa Karunya Council? I am, uh, having this inquiry for the reason this, this case filed before us against Cagawad Errol filed on the seventh City Council. Now we are on eighth City Council. Is there any roles in our house rules that we have the power for the carryover?
Thank you, Honorable Makoobos. Refer to the committee and rules, but please allow me to read Section Four. Uh, unfinished business refers to the proposals or measures that have been left enacted upon postponed or left unfinished during the previous sessions. This item includes business unacted upon at the end of the term of the previous administration.
Mr. Chair, we are talking on our duties and responsibilities with regards to legislative measures. We are now talking with the case, which separate mandate to this council, and it's the same with the work of Congress.
Thank you, Honorable Makoobos. To be clarified, Honorable Campos, followed by Honorable Pabio.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with the August body, since we have rules on the respective Committee of Good Governance and Public Ethics, and we have an IRP as well, so to clarify and make sure that everything is in sync with the two rules, maybe we could serve a letter to the CLGOO or the local DILG for illegal opinion from them if we are allowed to discuss matters that has been filed on the previous council, Mr. Chair.
Noted, Honorable Campos. Honorable Pabio. Honorable Bardon.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is only to remind to all members of Eighth City Councils that we will have a meeting, uh, tomorrow, nine AM with regards to the peace and order and public safety.
Loted, Honorable Bardon. Yes, I've received a copy of your invitation. Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayong hapon sa tanan. This is to inform everyone that all members of the Eighth City Council with our city vice mayor, that after our regular session today, there will be a committee hearing regarding the proposed ordinance for the change of the corporate seal in the City of Mathi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. If there are no other announcements, please proceed to the next item.
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by the Honorable Campos.
Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the adjournment of the third regular session of the Eighth City Council. I do so move.
Thank you. There's a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adjournment of the day's session, seconded by all session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
Let us put ourselves in a holy presence of God. Heavenly Father, as we come to the end of our session for today, we thank you para sa among mga accomplishments. May the business discussed served as a catalyst para sa ikalambu sa atong siyudad o kinabuy sa kadaghanan. May we live here recognizing that you are God of all wisdom and you are willing to lead us forward. Lord bless each public servant ang mga naaderi atanan, as well as sa ilang mga pamilya og sa mga staff nila nga naaderi akanunay nga mo ang nagaduty- dutykyod ka daadlaw. And let your hands of divine protection be with them throughout the rest of the week. Katung mga business na naisgutan namo karong adlawa, let it bear fruits of positivity to strengthen our beloved City of Mathi. And with everything that we have, a never-ending gratitude to our God, our loving Father. Amen.